Before I turn it over to the amazing host of the evening, our village's board, can you go to the board? Our small people who would like to go hang out with our child care providers, Miss Esther, can you raise your hand? So any small people should be going with Miss Esther to the cafeteria. Do we have anyone here heading to cafeteria or the living room? Great. All right. We just have one last minute technology switch. So this has people who are trying to watch the best home and now on Facebook, run to YouTube. We will not make you a braver. You can take out your phones, just send a text to somebody. And I introduce you to Kayla.
Please fire them out, walk up.
I'm Kaylee. So what we're doing here today, or what the village is about, what we vote for, me and our moderators are here for, is the village is an ethnical, youth and family centered organization in Compton County that addresses systemic injustices through responsive and anti-racist programming and services to build an ethical, inclusive community. So this evening, each of our seven candidates will be asked a series of five questions, all of which were written and will be asked by members of our village board. This is Garcia, and this is BJ, and again, I am Kaylee. And our three, oh, sorry. Three candidates will have three minutes to respond to each question, and then I will alternate which are not. They will alternate. They will alternate which one goes first each time. At the one-minute mark, our timekeeper Merrill, he will hold a yellow reminder card, and when the time is up, she will hold a red card and then call the next person. Thank you guys so much for coming, and thank you for BJ hosting us. To Caleb Thomas for our beautiful employer, for Tamaeche Met, and IPEI for providing food and support child care. And especially to Andy McCasey from IPEI for facilitating our sound event. And most of all, thank you to all the members on the youth board, who I will introduce, I will allow to introduce right now.
Hi, my name's Garcia. I'm Hispanic American, who is currently getting, I'm currently getting my key, and I'm happy to hear you.
Hi, I'm the president of the chapter of the DJ.
What's your name?
Oh, my name is LeBron, and I can call you BJ. I would like to be here.
I will start with my first question. Tell us about yourself and why people should vote for you, for you to serve on the Ethica School District Board of Education.
Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. All right. Hey, Garcia. I am. I'm David Pecori. And I've got to be honest to explain a lot. I'll start by saying I grew up in this town. I attended Del Sherman Northeast with Ethica High. And from Miss Gargis, my first day of work here, to Mr. Briggs, Mr. Blackness, Mr. Slattery, other Mr. Slattery, Ms. Corson, in senior year, every teacher I had in this district had a profound impact on my life and making me the person I am today. I have a deep love of education. And I'm running because I feel like the ICSD, I think about it, it felt like the ICSD is less than the summer of this part. We have great students, we have great teachers, we have great facilities, we have an engaging community, we have a healthy budget. And yet we've seen sort of a systemic decline in academic achievement over the years. We have higher than expected teacher turnover. And these are hard problems to solve. And I'm not saying that I'm going to, if I'm elected, walk in on day one and have all the answers. But what I bring to the board is a background in financial analysis, in problem solving, in digging into problems, gathering data, analyzing the data, and taking an objective view, and doing my best to help with the solution. And I also bring, I think, a good dose of humility. I don't have the answer for all the answers. But I look forward to working with other smart people on the board and trying to make this district a better place.
I chill a trip, and I see a lot of familiar faces in the room, and that's nice. The room itself was very familiar because I worked at BJM as well as every other school in the district at one time or another. I moved, I think, about forty years ago. And been living downtown ever since, currently on First Street. I grew up in South Bennington, kind of called Conlin, where we had a high school that wasn't nearly as well-funded or effective as our high school. And it's exciting to see the kinds of things that happen there for someone from a much smaller world this year. As I said, I've worked at every school in the district and a school psychologist. During that time, I also served as the district's behavior analyst and as the district's autism consultant. And many years on the district committee on special education. I loved my time in the district, I loved this district. I've worked with an incredible number of spectacular teachers, speech therapists, and social workers over the years. And I hope that people in the future have the opportunity to work with people of such caligum here in our school district. I think that past behavior is the best predictor of future behavior. And for people considering they want to vote for our, I would ask you to vote for me because I believe my past behavior shows the kind of work I want to do on the board. Now conversely, if you don't like what I've been doing on the board, then you shouldn't vote for me. But let me tell you a little bit about that. Starting three years ago, I held listening sessions every Tuesday to talk to people and listen to people in our community. And I did that for about a year and a half, until I felt I broke my elbows and decided just about everybody probably had enough talking with me at that point, and I discontinued people listening session. I've had just about perfect attendance at all board of education committees. And I've done a lot more than just our two main jobs as board members, which are to bring a budget to the community and to evaluate the student. Those are important jobs, but I believe that as board members, our obligations go beyond that. And when I've seen something or heard about something that I thought was right, it was unfair in this year, I challenged our illustrators and I've been a member of the board. So at this point, I will stop. And I'll tell you more later about what I've been doing on the board. Thank you.
If everybody across the board could speak up, just so that our online voice can hear us.
Thank you to Village at Ethica and the Public Education Commission for co-sponsoring this annual event. I am proud of the village because Merrill and the youth board are visions of the village when it first was born. Karen, I was the second president of a record at the Village at Ethica. That's why this organization is so dear to my heart. And thanks for hosting it here at BJM because my two children, who have graduated from the Ethica City School District, graduated and went to BJM. Our family chose to open enroll in BJM. We knew the commitment required the transportation of our students. And we were glad that we did that because they're fond memories, fond memories I could see and a vision in this third room. I was elected first at the Board of Education in 2022, so I'm about to compete my first term. And I'm looking to the second term. I've been involved in, along the board, the finance and the social studies committees the first year, I was a volunteer. I'm committed to public education because I think that we as a community have the right and the right to hold the school district accountable. And that's how the first deputy report department and subsequent deputy report departments were formed around holding the school district accountable to ensure academic achievement for our students. Dr. Mark Elizabeth King Jr. has a quote that's very fond to me. "Life's most persistent and urgent question is what are you doing in the office?" And I always have to ask myself, what am I doing for our office? And showing my commitment, I was involved in the Educating Inclusion Leadership Council. We were instrumental in providing what is now known as the Communication Protocol for the school district. I was involved in various hiring committees on the school district. Back in 2014, I think it was, when English as a Second Language changed terminology to English as a New Language, I was involved in the Special Ed ad hoc group at that time. And I continue to be involved in the school district because this is my commitment. I have two graduates, let me say it, but my two biological children are not my own children. It takes a village. I am connected with so many other children within the school district. And just want to ensure that when we talk about academic achievement, what do we truly mean, what do we understand? Or what do we see as a commitment from us, the community? We don't have fairness schools. We have challenges, we went through challenges in 2020. And how do we progress from there? So I'm running a second term to just continue my level of commitment with this school district, a place where I reside and live, and we have a great environment.
How about now?
That's good, that's good, that's good. Yeah.
First of all, I just want to thank everyone for coming in and joining us today. Now, you still couldn't hear us speaking, so please bear with me. I'm a little nervous. My name is Madeline Cerdona. I moved to Ethica about six years ago. My kids went to full pre-elementary, that's where we started our journey in Ethica. And from there, we went to Del Sherman, Boynton School, and now we have my children in that high school, Ethica High School. And from day one, I have been dealing with pretty, sorry, challenging issues. And I have been ever since working with the teachers and the districts and some of our Board of Ed back in the day, working with them just to see how can we improve some of the areas where I call it like a bridge that you talk about, it's getting cemented. I am running for the board just to get a chance for families like mine. There are often underrepresented and not heard and overlooked often. I want our children to be able to not only hear they matter or feel that they matter. I want our families to know that they have somebody that actually do care, that works hard as a single mom. I mean, when does it end, right? Like, I want not just what's best for my children, but in that sense, in order to accomplish that, we need to face and constantly as a community. I've been working with the village at Ethica ever since, love Merrill, very hardworking, and I've seen that it's not just, it's not just me, right? There's many other families like me and other students like mine that are fighting for the same. So I just want a chance to just have a stay at the table so our voices can be heard. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me? Microphones freak me out. I, here we go. Hello, my name is Jacob Shepherd. It's nice to be here. I'm glad that finally people applauded. It was a really awkward silence for a while, so I think we should, let's do better. I guess first and foremost, I'm a parent and a husband, my wife Sarah. I immediately returned to Ethica four years ago. I have three kids, they are three, seven, and sixteen. So we'd like to spread them out and have a big range. And they're, you know, either in the Ethica City School District or soon to be in the Ethica City School District. I'm also an educator. I've been an educator for the last twenty years. I grew up in Ethica, went to Cuba Heights, and then Boynton, and then the high school. And similar to what David shared, I owe a lot to the teachers that I've had. And they inspired me to be a teacher. I taught elementary school, I was an elementary school principal, I was a district administrator, and now a professor of education. I work within service teachers. I guess around eleven seats, so online, I don't count up to eleven seats. That would be hard. But I work within service teachers because I believe that, so that's me, right? I dedicated my life thus far to education. I continue to, and it's been very strange living in Ethica for the last four years and not being able to, like, work it online. And I want to be part of the Board of Education to support our schools and to support, and supporting schools, it's about supporting students. I think that every student in Ethica deserves the opportunity to have a really excellent education so that they can graduate from high school and live the life of their choice, right? And not have their educational experience or the lack of strong educational experience be a barrier to students having choiceful lives. And so with that in mind, I think that students are successful at school largely because of the teachers that they have. And I worry that currently in the Ethica City School District, teachers do not have the sort of systematic support that they need in order to properly serve the students. And the heroic efforts of individuals is admirable, but we need district-wide systematic approaches to learning so that your educational experience isn't a function of, isn't radically different from classroom to classroom, from school to school. I've seen that done as a teacher and a principal, and I want that for my kids and for all the kids in the school district. So I hope you vote for me.
Hello, everyone. My name is Scott Yonkey. To start off with, thank you to the IPEI as well as the village for hosting us today. I think this is always an important forum for us to be able to be heard and for our student representatives to be able to ask us questions that really matter to them. A little stat about myself. I grew up in Ina, Wisconsin, and it's very similar to a new to Ethica. Both of my parents were in manufacturing. I went through the school district as a low-income student. I received services through the school district and worked two jobs through college, was able to get through college, graduate, and go on to a really great life that I have right now with my family and my two children living here in Ethica. I love Ethica because then a great community environment for us to grow up in. But I'm frustrated right now. I'm frustrated as a parent, as a parent, as a taxpayer, that we do have problems within our schools. We have seen issues. We have five of our schools within the district that are not performing where they should be. We have declined over the last ten years in our test scores. We have graduation rates that haven't been that good. So yes, we have problems, and we need to find solutions to these problems. This is missed opportunity. This isn't, you know, we can focus on the problems all day, but it's missed opportunity for our students or our community. When we don't support our children and their education goals and making sure that they're ready for life post-graduation, I really feel that that's a failure in our work. But we all have bright spots too. This district, we have great teachers, we have parents that care, we have community support, I mean, look at the room. We have lots of community here, listening and trying to understand what's going to be best for us for the next three-plus years. The core mission of education is to prepare students for life post-graduation, whether that means college, whether that means a trade program, whether that means service within our community. We need to make sure that we're supporting them and we're able to give them those opportunities. I join with Jacob and David here, who also are on the board, because we feel that in order to really flip change quickly, we need to actually have all of us together and actually be able to make the necessary changes within the board. One of my focuses, what I would really like to do, or what I want to see, and I hope that everyone listens as I continue on, is that I'm here to listen, I want to support you, and I look forward to the rest of our conversation this evening.
Hi, Erin. My name is Erin Croyle. I am running for my third term on this board. So six years of experience is a lot and it means a lot. This work is really hard. And part of the reason I'm running is, again, is to continue that work. It takes an entire term in some cases to get out and running. My first term was during COVID. I started in 2019, and we were hit with just unprecedented challenges. A little bit more about me, though, I'm very urgent, and so I'm trying to figure out whatever order I might be able to go in. But I'm running also because representation matters. I am from nowhere in northeast Ohio, and my parents started out with nothing. And I was lucky enough to get an internship and go to DC and become a journalist. And I was working with Al Jazeera's National Geographic, and those jobs allowed me to be able to share the voice with the voiceless. And that is stuff with me throughout my life. And then my son Arlo was born in 2010, and he had Down Syndrome, and it totally changed my entire life. And it changed the way I parented. And I don't know what kind of parent I would be had, having him not enter my life. It really shifted my priorities to see that, you know, reaching your full, reaching full potential looks different for every student. And that is something that I bring with me to the board. Academic excellence is important, but full potential can look differently for every student. You know, the other thing that I've really focused on in this past year is recognizing that how our schools are funded, how public schools across the country are funded, is fundamentally flawed. It's unsustainable. And so in this past year, through our legislative advocacy work that I headed up, I worked with local legislators to introduce a resolution that would put a voice on the Compton County Industrial Development Agency, which would have a school representative on that board. That is currently with our local legislators. We are looking for it to go to the governor. This kind of work takes time. So these are things that we're doing, but it doesn't happen overnight. And something I've learned throughout my life is that you can't go and sit in a meeting, I can't just go and sit in the audience at the IDA and say what I think matters. Someone needs to be on that board, maybe for what schools, the way they need to be funded, and pay our educators, all of our educators, from our janitors to our bus drivers, to our TAs, to our ESPs, to our teachers, everybody more. We have to be able to have a sustainable budget, and we have to figure out how to fund that that does not kill the people living in this community with our taxes. And last year's budget season, that experience taught me that. Does Red mean that I'm at three minutes? So that's something that's really important and that I'm going to continue focusing on along with inclusion and everything else.
So my question is, I'm a great African-American young man who attends in the guise. I would like to know how you, if you're elected, how would you support students that look and identify as? If elected, how would you support students who look and identify as?
Thank you, BJ. I would start by asking you and people who identify and look like you what you needed in terms of support. And I would talk with the people you work with most closely and see what they need to be heard. I won't pretend to know everything about your experience, especially everything about your experience in the high school. It's a big school, there are a great many people there. And my work has taught me, my life has taught me that we have to take people as individuals. And I'm not a big believer in group solutions. And I think the other thing I would say is that I would not see you as a problem. I would see you as someone who needed to be listened to and supported. That's my answer. I would continue to support, as I have in the past, programs at Ethica High School and other schools around the district that will get the diversity of our population and work to help everyone be included. Thank you.
Just, so the knowledge is. So thank you very much, BJ, for that question. Dr. Feat, no, it's not here, none, it's dead. Feat Nun is a retired educator from the school district. He started a community unit using music education programs, a summer program, it's Friday, during the summer, connect on you to that program. It sounds like a community center. I give you this history because he sang a song that was, I think, that was recorded and done late last year or earlier this year, "All Of Us." And in the lyrics, it says, "It takes all of us." It takes all of us as a community to connect with individual students. It takes all of us as a community to respect individual students, no matter what role of life. And what we need to do, we, as a school district, we have different programs and curriculums like culturally linguistic learning and middle, you know, sort of justice. But how do we connect with students? How do we respect students for whatever decision they may make in life? We have the dignity to give the all-student app. And it's something that we need to live out as community members and even as staff members, educators within the school district, that's what responsibility we have, that we need to respect individuals. We need to see an individual as if we're looking in a mirror with them and knowing that, I want that respect, I want to treat people that way. So that's my continued vision. It's something that we have to work on as a district because individually, we're working with people from different walks of life. But how do we get them to realize that when they see that student, they see the possibility, they see the future, they see the academic achievement that they can make? What are we doing as a community? It's not I and team as a school board. It's a team member and making sure that all the school district accountable to make sure that we do what we need to do to serve students. And by all that, it's also treat students and make sure we're graduating our students too because every student has a right to a public education. So I've been. So I'm the opponent of, I will always stand by that we need to make sure that we respect this, because each and every one of our students and what they're walking on, what they're choices that they need to make. It's neither the student where they are and how do we do that? And we have to sometimes light fire to make sure our educators and our staff do what they're supposed to do, as well as our administrators holding them accountable to bring the right programs needed to.
Hi, just a reminder that our friends would like you to hold the mic as close to your mouth as possible. Love you.
Is this good? BJ, what's it? Thank you so much for that question. That's one of my main reasons for running is because as a minority, I have six years of experience of not feeling hurt or seen or working behind the scenes, right? With the school districts and having endless meetings about the same issues year after year after year. And I think that's very important. If elected, I would like for you guys to feel that whenever you have seen me, you can approach me with any issue because we matter. And whether I am a lesbian or not, I want you guys to always know that. Regardless of how people see you or what they think about you before they get to know you, you matter and you deserve better. And we as a community should hold ourselves accountable and to highlight our integrity because it is our duty to teach you guys these things, how to prepare you for the future, how to help you manage challenges. So when you graduate and you leave our district and you choose to whatever, to do whatever you want to do for your life, that you are able and capable and equipped to handle whatever life process. But never give up, never stop fighting because, like I said, we all deserve education. We all want to be heard and have a sense of belonging. We shouldn't have to walk over eggshells, right, among other people. Like you matter the way that made you matter, right? And people should be able to be open and be accepted of that. And that is one of my main goals. Hopefully, we get that chance and we are able to be heard way, right now, so that people that actually are able to come together and revisit the, revisit this, this, um, passion happening in our school and our environment that we, it's more accepting and opening for all of us. Thank you.
I'm looking at my notes because I take notes when a question is asked. And my notes are all over the place, which is a sign of a good question, but a challenging question. So thanks, but no thanks, BJ. Thank you for making this a good question. I, when I grew up in Ithaca, I think in many ways the school district thirty years ago very much functioned as the school district itself made for me. I'm like the son of a torn-out professor and, um, like the school district really worked for me. And then since leaving Ithaca, I've worked in the Mississippi Delta, where I taught in a prominently rural African-American area. And then I was in Austin, Texas, which was primarily Latino, like a recent immigrant Spanish-American population. And then I was a principal in St. Louis, prominently in the city, like African-American population. And I think that both taught me about the wide range of people, right, that school districts need to serve, that we can't be focused on one specific group and that both across a place, both across, like, I like, whoever's bringing that is, I like it, it's pleasant to be here. But those within a classroom, within a school, certainly within a district, students are not model S. And so as a result, any district needs to function to realize that it's their job to serve the needs of all students. And so I think about the quality of what's happening within a classroom in terms of how students are treated by each other and by teachers. And I think about the sort of experience they have in school in terms of are they given, are students given the opportunity they need to live a life of choice? And so I think about, has the district systematically made it so that every student feels like they are in a safe, productive learning environment, free from bullying and with the right to learn, right? Where every student can be engaged, like, not a question where we are ignoring certain students, calling on some students. Some students are like sitting in the back, not being attended to, but where every student is engaged in every question and every task. And where teachers are, you know, like where we're building relationships and leading instruction that impacts all students. And I think that the issue of climate has come up and sort of like how change is slow. And I think here I just want to say, I think the change is too slow in the Ithaca City School District. There are things that can be done to create a better environment for all students. I've seen this before. There's a lot of things I want to talk about with that, but I imagine the opportunity will come up later. So I just want to say thank you for the question. We should be supporting all students. And I think that it's largely about what is the experience we're providing for students within the classroom, not just in an individual classroom, but across the district.
Thank you, BJ, for the question. I think we all know that one of the keys to success in life is a high-quality education. If we are not able to provide that education to our students in an equitable way, then we are failing them. And so when, and again, when we look at across the districts and we have schools that are not providing the high education for our Black, our Brown, our African-American, our low-income students, we are not providing them equity right now. We need to put a focus on that. We need to make sure that teachers are, or teachers have the professional development that they need to be successful, that we can go ahead and have a standard curriculum within our schools. Again, an equitable curriculum across the board. One curriculum that allows students to be successful, that allows teachers to be able to teach and understand where students may need additional support and they be able to provide the action plan for that individual student to get the services and extra support that they need. I'm reminded of my daughter in fourth grade. She, um, she was at Northeast. And one thing that I noticed was that in every single classroom, the curriculum itself was different. She was learning spelling words, which we all need to learn, right? Spelling words. And I kind of feel like we're out of spelling skill here sometimes. But, you know, we, but in other classrooms, they were learning completely different things in a different way. And how is that conducive to learning? And how is that conducive to ensure that all students are receiving the same education? But then as you progress, you know, from fourth grade to fifth grade to sixth grade, the teachers need to know that you've learned that material from five years ago, three years ago. And without that, you're not going to be able to continually understand where students are, where they need, where they need support, but where even where the teachers need to have the professional development to support the students themselves. So my hope, you know, for all students across the district is that we can come up with solutions that are equitable for everyone.
BJ, I love your question and I thank you for it. And I want to acknowledge that I cannot imagine how difficult it is to live in this world right now, being Black, being autistic, being anything different with all of things coming at us from everywhere. Like, right now it's dangerous to use words, "TEI." I mean, what is this world we're living in, right? And so how do we support you? I mean, I want to hear from you. And I, what's something that we've done in the last year is started listening circles with teachers to really understand what's happening and really talk about certain topics. And with your question, it makes me think this is something that we can sit and have a listening circle with students from IHS so we can find out how to support you. I'm not going to pretend to know. What I do know is that I see implicit bias everywhere. What I do know is when I take my son with Down syndrome places, now that he's older and he's not little kid cute, the stares aren't the smiles anymore. They're stares and they're me. And when I see the news and I see how people are treated just because they're Black, just because they're this, just because they're that, I can't imagine what you're up against. And I see even, I think about some of my work colleagues and how professional, like I see Karen in meetings and I like, and like, you have to be at a completely different standard. When I hear about Black excellence, I think about how you have to perform so much better. The flows that I can get away with being a white person, it's beyond me, right? And so let's recognize that and let's see how we can support you and recognize to give you all a break and support you where you are and need to where you are. So I want to know more about what you need. I'm not going to pretend to have the answers. I want us as a district to continue practicing cultural humility, to really talk to students and to listen to you. This is not, I don't have the answer. I need you to help me have the answer.
Um, I have to be honest, BJ, this is a fairly hard question to answer seven. I think there are seven compassionate and empathetic people here at the table. And I don't disagree with what anyone has said before me. And it's hard to add to it what I would say. And this is sort of echoing Erin, it is the other. Not only don't I know what you go through, but I can. I can know what you go through. And so what, I'm going to come back to the word I used in my first answer, which is humility. As a board member, I would come to you with humility and listen and hear what you have to say because I'm interested. And like I said, I don't know, don't know your experience. But as a board member specifically, what can we do? We can enact policies throughout the district. And if there are policies out there that, um, that you think would be more supportive of you than what we have now, I'd love to hear them. I'd also just sort of like to, I don't take up too much time, to sort of end on an optimistic note, which is that, you know, the world's an amazing place and I remember being your age and obviously having a different set of experiences. But, um, you know, anytime you're feeling overwhelmed, anytime you're feeling down, just remember there are a lot of great people out there. The world is an amazing place and there are a lot of people who care for you and will for you.
So for our next question, many members of the village youth board are children of immigrant parents. We are very concerned about the presence of law enforcement, particularly ICE officials on our school campuses. What is your position on law enforcement in schools and our district's relationship with ICE?
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris. And am I being heard all the way back? Make sure. Thank you very much. ICE should not be on our school district rounds. And I know that our deputy superintendent, Dan Bryman, has spoken with the law enforcement agencies throughout this area, at the police department and also the sheriff's department to ensure that they don't just come and stop in. So, um, because we did have a situation within a month ago that there were two elementary schools whereby law enforcement had done a visit where they say they regularly just visit. Yet they were fully clothed in their uniform law and they're not supposed to do that. Our administrator has spoken to them and has invited them and had a conversation with them. We were brought up to one of the schools that we wanted to do a listening session with them, but the school, the caretakers, the PTA, and teacher said, "No, we don't want a listening session. We just don't want them to come in here." Because they were not needed at that time. Now, there are some situations when law enforcement may need to come in here. If, if, and we have a safety plan. I talked about a lockdown or another situation like that. If they do need, they would go through the right channels and like property halls, but to just long end on the street to our principals within any of our schools, they technically are not allowed to do that. And however, administrator has spoken down against that, which I agree with.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Am I good here?
Thank you. Um, so I'm in agreement with Erin. Um, I don't believe that law enforcement and ICE should be in our schools. I feel like that's one of the main issues that I see with that of the district. I feel like it's our responsibility to be proactive in assuring the safety of our students, regardless of their status, they're part of our community. And that's what matters. That should be prioritized, you know? Anything beyond like the school, district issues, it should be handled, you know, outside of it with our families and not in a way that our kids should be able to feel safe going to school and focused and feel not stressed about other things. Just be ready to learn and be in an environment that they just feel safe because, you know, as parents, that's what we want when we send our children to school. We don't want to worry about, am I going to see my child back? You know, something's going to happen, like, but that's a scary, that's a scary thought for a parent. And of course, it is a scary thought for our student. And I believe that we shouldn't put that type of pressure on our students. And we should just come with a better plan to reassure that those things are not happening and be proactive about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruph, for the question. I mean, everything that you said, right? I feel like Erin described perfectly at the beginning. I should not be on campus because the school district has smart policies around us because across the country there's, there's just horrifying policies being done at a federal level against immigrants. It's awful and I cannot imagine. Across the country, parents, many parents are like keeping their kids home, right? Because of fear of, of anti-immigrant action. And so part of me, the only thing I would add to what's been said is that I think it's important to clearly communicate as a district what the stance is, that we are supportive of all students, that all students deserve to be able to come to school safe, that all parents and families need to be able to send their kids to school knowing that they'll be safe at school and come home at the end of the day. And that we should take every action to make sure that's true and take every action to communicate it with the community so that this is just a known thing. This is a, should not in any way be controversial.
Thank you for the question. Every week I come downtown Ithaca and I volunteer at Mantle Conception as part of a food thing that they do on Tuesdays. Many times we have LA CS students come and join us as well to help support them. I have a large population of the people that come. I have a large population of the people that come there. I mean, our immigrants. Uh, I could never imagine having ICE come and disrupt what we are doing, what we're trying to do for our community. Uh, that's just, it, it, I, I guess, I, I mean, I don't even know how I would react because that's, that's not something that we stand for. That's not something that we want. Uh, we want to be able to support our community in all various ways. And it comes back to our students, you know? As a community, uh, we see the need that all students should have a safe environment. Uh, all parents should feel safe sending their children to school. Um, we need to make sure that that is communicated, that is known. Uh, and we need to enforce that as much as we can to the best of our abilities. Uh, so I really, uh, I mean, I think the district probably does. Everybody knows they do by going to the different board meetings. This has been a topic that has been brought up before as well. Um, that we do have policies in place, that we do have procedures in place to prevent these types of actions from occurring.
Just to clarify, you also asked about, you asked about ICE, but also law enforcement in general, right? And so, you know, second, what my board colleague Karen said about ICE is, you know, we're all in, um, in our legislative advocacy work. It's something that we've asked about with, um, our council to, to see where we are and, and what we can do to stay on top of things and what laws that are changing. Because it's really important that we protect students in our community. Um, and the one thing that I really also think, you know, to broaden your question to the law enforcement piece is that as a district, I know that we recognize how triggering it can be for many students to see police officers come to our school. And that is very much something we try to avoid happening in, in every single instance. We try to deescalate and not ever let it get to that point. Because, you know, it, it's a different feeling depending on who you are. Police might feel safe for one group of people and very unsafe for others. And our district does recognize that and does do diligence to try to prevent any sort of, you know, anxiety for our students. Um, it is something that I don't think many other districts do or recognize for their students. And I, I, I'm quite proud of the work that they do there. I just try to, um, recognize how different it is to be for everybody. But, um, I wish honestly, and I just want to say, you know, not, it's not something that we can necessarily do as a board, but I, I, I do want to explore being more forceful about our stance on ICE as we move forward because it's important what's happening. And if there's anything that we can do as we continue with our legislative work, I, I will take any measure possible. But we're following legal values on that always.
Thank you. Um, I think I have a short answer here. First part of your question, ICE should not be on schools. Period. We, uh, as a district cannot violate federal law. But, uh, sure of that, ICE can never be in our schools. Um, in terms of broadening the question to law enforcement, uh, Karen raised a lot of good points. There is, uh, in our community, as in many communities, um, a proper relationship between law enforcement and communities and, uh, and specific schools. Um, it's something we need to, we need to work on. And obviously, there are situations, uh, thankfully rare, but there are situations where law enforcement does need to come into our schools. Um, but, uh, in, in, in general, yes, I, I think that we need to, um, we need to do a better job of, of figuring out the, yeah, figuring out the best ways to prevent them coming in, except when it's absolutely necessary and, um, and, yeah, just to, to work more, uh, as a community on this.
I think it's pretty much all that's said. If it is a sanctuary city, it will remain a sanctuary city. And if it will remain sanctuary, it's my understanding that a warrant is required for ICE to access our schools. And I know that our administration is in close contact with our legal advisors about any incidents or threat of ICE entering the schools. Safety is our first priority, and safety of all of our students.
Just a reminder to speak up again.
I really don't like microphones, guys. Um, for our next question, sorry. My fellow students and I have felt negatively impacted by the failure of the first budget vote last year. Are you planning about yes or no on this year's budget proposal? Please share why or why not. Um, I also have a reminder and keeping, um, close attention. But if you do see the red, um, can you, can Merrill show that for everybody again? Your red, the red piece of paper, it is a reminder. Stop.
I'm not red, guys.
Thank you, guys, for that question. Um, as you may not know, I am not a politician. So I'm not fully educated on all the grounds. I am coming as a single mom with family issues and firsthand experiences. Um, it's a fact that I do promise to get educated and find, um, the persons eligible, um, to teach me in this area because I might not have more, more experience. And, um, I have been working in other areas with the district. And like I said, it's just several, uh, subjects, so, um, I am a hardworking mother and just persistent. And I like to see the follow through and pretty much, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaylee, for the question. There were a couple of parts. Do I support this year's budget? Yes. Why do I support it? Because I think that as, you know, education does require expenses. Teachers get paid more each year according to a salary schedule. That is important. And I think that the budget has been placed forward as a reasonable one. Regarding last year, that was a very scary time in my mind because I think that too often taxpayers are pitted against schools, right? You're either, you're either for schools, which means you're for budgets, or you're against kids, which means you're against budgets. I think it's more complicated than that. As a, as a principal, and as a principal on St. Louis, New York State, we, New York State does a relatively good job of funding schools. Missouri does not. We have less than half the amount of money that we have to educate students. And so, I'm glad that the schools are better funded here in New York, although I sympathize sometimes by the things that we do not do with the money that we have. And so, just a few examples, right? Um, when I was a principal, everyone had the supplies they needed at schools. Teachers weren't paying for supplies. Families weren't asked to pay for supplies. That is not the case here universally. That is bizarre to me. Um, like, we had systems in place to like support and switch teachers, to help deescalate students who are having a challenging day, um, to provide curriculum in all subject areas and copies of that curriculum so that teachers could spend their planning periods, like, either like, you know, preparing for their lessons or being with kids. These are not things that universally happen in the school district. Um, forty years ago, almost forty years ago, my mother taught me phonics because the school district, like, phonics was not universally done in the Ithaca school district. It is only a few years ago that Ithaca did what other states, like, require all schools to do. And it has taken years, like, more than, in many school districts, they will adopt a curriculum in less than a year. And it, as these school districts, it has taken multiple years to not fully adopt even literacy curriculum through K through eight. And so, I think that both we need to support budgets and we need to look at how we're spending money because we're doing something wrong if we aren't providing very basic things that districts around the country do with less. That's my response.
Thank you for the question. Uh, as it relates to this year's budget, yes, I might not be voting on this year's budget. Yes, affirmative. Um, last year, uh, of course, we, we all know, uh, you know, a confluence of different issues, uh, that arose as part of that budget. Um, you know, we had many families affected, uh, by the assessments that coupled with a, um, a school budget that was being proposed that was much higher than we would have expected as tax buyers, uh, created an interesting, you know, environment that we had. Um, post that, I'm going to be honest, one of the things, and that's one of the things that drove me to really get involved in the school district this year. Um, I have attended a majority of the school board meetings. I've spoken at school board meetings, um, because I, I want to make sure that we actually are implementing change. But for me, it was actually learning more around what, what's actually going on. You know, my day job is a consultant. I listen, I listen, I listen, I listen. And, um, I've been listening to what's being said at our school boards. I've been listening to our community members. I've been listening to our teachers to truly understand what needs to be done and where are we going with this district. Um, and, uh, I mean, I, I, I sat in the meeting after the budget was approved, that, that, uh, was passed by the, uh, by the city or by the constituents. Um, and I was shocked to hear programs that were getting cut that were never discussed during our board meetings have been being cut. Language programs being cut, um, building substitutes being cut. Again, none of that was discussed during those meetings at all. So we need more transparency. We need a better understanding what is actually going into these budgets. What are the programs that we're supporting? And what are the data points to back up what's, what do we need to be in an effective school district itself?
We're paying attention. Sorry. Okay, thank you. Let's restart my time. Reclaim my time. We all need to last a second, right? So, um, okay. Short answer, did it, did that budget failure negatively impact our schools? Absolutely, yes. We lost extended day. I mean, we're talking about schools where kids need extra support. We lost extended day where teachers would be able to stay and help with homework and things like that. I, you know, last year's budget was such a difficult moment because the assessments just created this perfect storm of mess, right? But we needed that budget. And that's why I really do want to focus on, on changing the way we're funded. But, um, I'm absolutely voting yes this year. Um, it's, it's interesting, like, we lost teachers. Like, we didn't let teachers go, but we were clear about everything that we were having to do when we had to pass a lower budget. You know, we were not going to approve any teachers that left from retirement or whatnot. We weren't going to replace. We lost, um, assistant associate principals from schools that really needed them. And because I'm in listening circles with teachers and then hearing, I mean, they are tapped out. And that budget would have provided them more support, more training. We have amazing professional development. We have amazing teachers in the school. We have people that are working so hard. We also have a school district that does not turn students away. You know, you talk about other schools that are performing better. Guess what? We don't turn anybody away. A lot of school districts will say, will like send students to another district because they're having too much trouble. We don't, we stay and keep those families. We support them, we work with them. We practice inclusionary practices. And it's really weird hearing about test scores, and that's all we're focused on, when I also know that teaching to test is something that I've heard every teacher say is such a waste of energy and is not conducive to learning. You know, if you take time out to start to teach to test, then you're not going to actually learn the curriculum going forward. So our testing is flawed. It doesn't give us a clear picture of what's going on with our students. We really need to look at our practices and our best practices. And I know that people are doing that. And it's, it's just creating an environment where we're supporting each other, but listening to students and listening to teachers. Just looking at data does not give the full picture. And trying to pretend that cutting the budget is because we consider schools failing, which, by the way, is just like criticizing these hardworking teachers, right? These teachers are busting their butts. Our building leaders are busting their butts. We're seeing improvement from the improvement plans. We're seeing people working together. We're seeing these improvement plans presented at our curriculum meetings. That's red. I'll finish my sentence. And then we're seeing people saying, you're going to take that and implement these at extra schools. This, these things aren't happening. But stuff doesn't happen with a click of a finger. Takes time and collaboration and communication and relationship.
Uh, yes, I will be voting in favor of budget next Tuesday. Um, I, I think it's, uh, it's a reasonable increase. It's roughly in line with inflation. Um, but I will, a lot of the things that Jacob and Scott called out, um, I think we can do better as a district with the budget that we have. Um, there are many other districts within the state that are similarly funded to ours, that, uh, have similar demographics to ours. And they are not seeing the turnover that we have. They're not seeing the systemic declines in achievement that we have been experiencing for over a decade. It's, it's not just test scores. It's, it's any objective metric of performance. Um, our district has been falling behind. And, uh, so I am running the board because I want to make sure that these hundred sixty nine million dollars that, uh, that the district has are, are being spent in ways that produce, uh, produce meaningful improvements.
Yes, I'm voting for the budget. Yes, I already voted for the budget. And that was part of the unanimous board decision to present for budget to the public. Now, that doesn't mean that it's my budget or Erin's budget or Karen's budget. It's a collaborative effort and largely instrumental part of the administrative team bringing to us what they thought should happen. As you've heard, it's a rollover budget, meaning that it's largely carrying over the programs and staffing from last year with some increases due to actual increases and due inflation. If it had been my budget, it's quite possible that there were things I would have cut and there were things I would have added money to. But we agree that it's a good budget and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Yes, I will be voting for the budget. I'm saying it consists of Jill and you pointed out. I, I wanted to make a correction to you because you said that comparing it to Missouri and, uh, Kansas City.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I will be voting for the budget. And you just pointed out with, um, Jill, uh, currently on the board. And I wanted to make the correction that Jacob had stated when he was comparing New York State budget process, um, to Missouri. He said that New York State does do a good job of funding schools. Did you say Missouri? Did you say Missouri? Missouri does do, New York State doesn't do a good job of funding schools. That's what I wanted to point out. Because within this school district, if it is considered a wealthy small school district, we have to go to our taxpayers for 70%, up to 70% of the revenue for our budget. Yet downstate, New York State funds there's a good portion more than half percent. So it doesn't do a good job of funding our schools here. Last year's budget wasn't debacle, but the voting process wasn't debacle. Not budget, the voting process, because it was voted down. And as a community, we always have to remember that you don't vote for the city budget, you don't vote for Tompkins County budget, but the only budget you vote for is school district. And yes, there was types property assessed that my property was assessed, and I went and appealed, and I encouraged people to go and appeal. And I was at the office 10:00 PM. That was my appeal appointment time, but we made sure and we went back a second time to appeal too because we were not satisfied. So we, as a community, we have to see what budgets we vote on, what budgets we don't, but yet we're impacted by it. And our governor passed New York State budget recently, was late passing this year. It's been late passing for the past couple of years. And said that percentage of funding will go to universal pre-pays and other programs. But by the time it trickles down, sometimes we don't get it because of how we are classified as if it was a city school district. It was unfortunate, several programs weren't cut at all. But it's not that the administrators or the leaders were not transparent about the process, but third week in May, budget voted down. We had to get another budget to the public by June. We had a quick three-week turnaround to get another budget to the public. So that being said, administrative team had to go to all the leaders, principals and so forth to say, okay, well, what needs to be rectified? Note that they could not, while we were doing a budget process over like an eight-month, 10-month period, now was into one week, one month, and I don't want to wrap it up. And that was, so therefore, the conversations that happened was a quick turnaround, unfortunately. And it continued to happen in the summer. That's why certain things weren't fully in place until early August. But I will be voting yes for the budget.
Okay, our next speaker. We have heard that there may be a cell phone ban imposed at all schools in New York State. While we understand that people are concerned about kids having too much free time, what would you say to students and families who do not feel safe at school without the ability to contact their loved ones directly using the phone?
Thank you for asking, E.J. First, just to clarify, New York State, all states have horrible consequences for funding schools that are deeply inequitable based on property taxes. I'm just trying to point at, like, I guess my point was to say Missouri is even worse. Like, we don't have a safe funding program. So I point that there's more we can do in New York and survive the pandemic, although we don't do some of the things that I saw, and I'm anticipating that maybe coming worse funding, except the thing for clarifying. To your question, the cell phone ban is happening, right? The budget got passed by New York State, so there will be a bell-to-bell on cell phone ban. I've been a supporter of it for a while. I spoke at the board a year ago to share that. And my daughter is not happy about it. She's 16, loves her phone maybe more than me. And for students who don't feel safe being at school without being able to access, I guess first, one of the good things about how the ban is structured, it doesn't mean that students wouldn't bring phones, like can't bring their phone to school, right? Students might need their phone before school, they might need their phone after school, right? Transportation often a mess after school activities, et cetera. The idea is that students wouldn't have it over the course of schooling, and then they can come back upon the school board to make sure that there's policies that if a student needs to contact someone during the school day, that they can. It just wouldn't be with a cell phone during instructional time and like during transitions. Regarding cell phone bans, I want to say the reason I spoke for them for a while is because this has been one of the most widely studied initiatives in education in any recent history. It's been studied at literally thousands of schools, hundreds of districts around the world, and every single study said the same thing, which is when we remove cell phones from schools during like the time of the day, interpersonal relationships improve, whole game decreases, academics improve, attendance improves, name a positive, name a metric at school improves with not having cell phones. So I'm a big proponent, I wish this had happened earlier. And I actually think that when it comes into the implementation of that ban, it's really important to talk to families, students and teachers because we know it's happening. And so now what are the conflicts that might arise, right? We don't want there to be excessive like disciplinary disparities if students aren't using, like are using cell phones when they're not supposed to. We don't want families to feel isolated or disconnected from the school. We want teachers to feel supported in implementing that ban so that they can have nonproductive classes. And because it looks like I have a little bit of time, I just wanted also just wanted to do two things here and maybe with the previously. One, I just want to be like no public school can turn away kids. Like that is not a unique thing to give it, but that's illegal to my understanding. And that also, no one, I think on this page is saying to test, like school districts that are successful in terms of academic achievement, don't teach to test. What they do is they have clear instructional, like they know what instruction should look like, and they implement it across the district, and they have curriculum for students. I wanted to clarify those two points.
Thank you. So like Jacob, I had also spoken at school board meetings around the banning of cell phones. There is a real worry. I understand that there is a fear, there is anxiety around feeling safe at school. And I will definitely go back to that here with my answer. What we, Jacob has alluded to, there's vast amounts of information on and showing the effects of cell phones on use within our education system. We need to, our community is a very data-driven community. We respect that, and so if we truly look at the data behind this, it makes one-on-one person sense for us to go ahead and move forward with that. I've spoken at policy meetings. I thank you for the policy board members that are here tonight because they have led this charge as well within the district with our school nurse, our head of our nurse, leading the charge, gaining feedback from the community regarding the impacts of having a cell phone ban and what that actually would entail. As Jacob alluded to, the ban is going to be in place. There's, is already been passed by the state. So it will be the job of the next board to go ahead and make sure that there's a sound policy in place that will be enforced by the administration of the school. How that's going to occur, that's what we empower our superintendent to do. That's, that's the obvious role of the school board is to empower the superintendent to enforce the policies that have been set. So I'm not sure at this point, like what that's going to look like, what that means from a student's perspective, but I want to go back to safety. Again, we all need to make sure that our students feel safe at school. And understanding that is key. And if there's students that are not feeling safe today, we need to understand why that is occurring. We need to make sure that the administration, that our teachers, that our students all represent that safe, that it is a safe environment for everyone. And again, I would go back, you know, this is something for you as students also to bring up. You know, why aren't you feeling safe? How can you feel safe? Talk to your student leaders. Help them understand what could be made and what can be done differently to allow that to occur. Thanks.
I'm going to start by addressing like some sort of presidential debate, but just to clarify, I mentioned, I was going to say OCs get safe money. Just to be clear, we pay OCs for all of our services, right? Like, and it's quite expensive. And so when we talk about admin costs, and when you look at the budget lines, OCs is part of our admin cost. So, you know, if we cut admin, we're cutting OC services sometimes, right? So that is not some weird anomaly. And additionally, you know, talking about sending students away, New York City has an entire school district just for specialized students. And other areas have entire schools just for students with autism. So yes, they do find ways to send entire groups of students away and completely segregate. So we didn't mince words here, but let's be real, there is segregation happening everywhere. And if it does not do that, then that is a point of pride for us in the district that I think we should cherish. As far as the cell phone ban, I feel very strongly about this personally. And it's a funny thing where you have to put your personal effects aside. I want cell phones banned. I wish they would go away. I have to use it to work. I dread the day when I have to give them to my three kids. I like the whole week-to-eight policy. But what's interesting is, you know, there's a government mandate and it's going to come down. But as a district, I was willing to put my personal effects aside. We were having conversations about having schools do test runs to see what sort of cell phone policy could work in those schools because we recognize there are different ecosystems and different needs. So that's kind of the point at this point, but I think it's important to note that that's one of the things as a school board and as members of the board, you're one of nine where you need to think about and listen to other people's opinions and put your own personal beliefs aside and listen to what's best for everybody. And that's what I was hoping we were going to do as a district. But now we're going to be able to hopefully look at the policy and see where we can make, you know, exceptions for students who need to utilize phones during the day, whether it be health needs, mental health needs, whatnot, right? I know that something, I saw somewhere even the governor is going to make exceptions for families who rely on, you know, let's be real, high school where they're sometimes a huge part of their family's support system and they need to be reached throughout the day. And I think that a lot of times people throwing out these really huge bans are living in their own bubble and don't realize the reality of what some other people are living in. But honestly, I mean, between the cell phone ban and the research out there, you know, I think we need to really, as a district in general, look a little bit more at just screen use in general. It's, we do know that there's dangers out there. We do know that we've seen a really, really, if you talk to any educator in our district or in this country, there's been such a shift in how students' minds meant to help everything in the past 10 years. And that's a direct correlation to social media and all the things. And I think, I'll wrap it, we need to examine it as a district and just as educators nationwide in general. We really have to look at that.
Again, I've been, a lot of good interest, a lot I agree with, so I don't think I will take the bulk of your minutes. But you specifically asked how we should address students who don't feel safe because of this ban. And again, I think it's important to know that while your day-to-day experience is going to be very different, there will absolutely be ways for you to be reached and for you to reach anyone you need to in any sort of emergency. It's, yeah, it's going to feel very, very different not having your phone with you anytime I unplug. It's a bizarre but wonderful sensation. But no, I, 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 I guess I just want to reiterate that, you know, this district will absolutely ensure that no situation arises where you are unable to reach someone or be reached and that you feel safe at school.
I do support the cell phone ban. Unfortunately, Governor Bocel didn't consult with me on this because I would have asked her include more particulars about how we, how we might implement a cell phone ban in a way that's fair and relatively easy for teachers and administrators to implement. So I think that that's the task before the school board and the school district at this point, is how we go about doing it. And you can be assured that we'll be spending a lot of time on that a little bit too much.
I would agree with the cell phone ban, but unfortunately, the governor doesn't provide funding with the cell phone ban to state to school districts to implement because there are different policies and processes that we would have to go through. Will student cell phones be in place during the bell-to-bell? I attended New York State School Board Association Annual Convention last year, October, and a school in Long Island involved the community, involved students, involved staff to go through what the process would look like for the cell phone ban. So the governor has stated that we're to have a bell-to-bell cell phone ban. Next step is for the school board to get a policy together. We have one of the members of our policy committee right here, Emily Orford, and she and Dr. Shaka and Mr. Graco have already started the discussion on a cell phone policy. So once we finalize the policy and bring it forward to the board and read it, first read and vote on it, then the next step is that we have it as a school district policy, but yet each school would be responsible for enforcing that and how that works. And that's been the dynamics of each school really at input. And where I'm a pro, and I'm a pro of Long Island, and they got their secondary students involved in the discussion and spawned a committee and like E.J. and every one of you can be involved in something like that if the school chooses to do that too, to make sure of what's the impact. And one next step that Long Island school did, they set up what's called, you may recall this, a landline in the office, like a table and hours and everything, and sent to the students that in case of emergency, there were some exceptions where some students were able to keep their cell phone, but Long Island students, in case of emergency, go to this office and you could make a telephone call. You need to connect with your parents or caregivers. So the policy is set by the board, but then how do we roll it out? And we do have some educators in the school now that have different processes with their respective classes. One had like those shoe, those kind of shoe pods, the shoe bags, that they have students place in it before they go into the classroom and they'll be trained. There's a company that sells that at the pocket, which is very musty. That's why I said it would be good when the governor instilled certain things and made a manager in that gives funding with it for students. So yes, we have to look at the whole person as we connect with this process.
So my opinion would be that I'm a pro of vote, I would vote against it. Just by experience, my children and I don't feel the safest right now during the district, in our schools. Unfortunately, we have experiences more than once where situations have come up and they have to get the support from the staff and they have to reach out to me and... And they have to reach out to me and I've been able to stop what I'm doing and reach out to the school and work not only with my children, but also with the staff and the administrators. I think one of the main issues that we've come to realize and acknowledge is there's a lot of our children, a lot of our children, that do not feel safe in our schools. And I feel like that is a very important topic that we should discuss. And we should like bring our kids through this conversation so they can share their inputs and the reasons why they can feel safe. Or what can we do to provide a safer learning environment where they feel that not just by saying, reach out to somebody, means that things are gonna be handled. I believe that I will put more pressure on my teachers to not only having to teach the class and trying to make sure that everybody pays attention and understanding, but also making the decision, an individual decision for each student, whether they have an urgent matter or not. I feel like that is a great responsibility to add on our teachers and it's quite unfair for our students and our families. I believe that I would like to challenge the priority of our cellphones and turn our heads to the debate in our schools. I want that since elementary school, we are aware of this happening, not only in our district, in our schools, in our school buses, at such a young age. Six years later, it hasn't gotten any better. I feel like that takes greater urgency, in my opinion. Because, one, not only illegal, it affects our kids' development, our mental health. And I would challenge that that's what is causing a lot of the lack of being able to concentrate and feel in an environment where they feel safe to just be, you know, learned and be heard and feel accepted. That would be my opinion for that. Thank you.
The next question. Are you committed to culturally responsive educational practices and curriculum? If so, how will you maintain this commitment in the face of anti-DEI political climate? Are you committed to culturally responsive educational practices and curriculum? If so, how will you maintain this commitment in the face of anti-DEI political climate?
This is a tough question, I'm gonna be honest. We try to put a curriculum in place, you know, within our school districts that is responsive to all the needs of all the students themselves. We know that this doesn't always occur. And so, we have a curriculum committee. We have various members of the school district. But we also have a community here with Ithaca College, with Cornell University, that has done research, that has provided input into this. And I would actually think that, you know, that would be one of our, you know, first steps is understanding and listening, what needs to be done in order to make our education more culturally responsive itself. As it relates to the current political environment, I guess, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know what's going on. It changes, it seems like, from day to day, what's actually happening. And it's really difficult to have a school curriculum and a school environment with all these massive changes happening at the federal level itself. And so I think what we need to do, we need to focus on us. What are our needs? What is it the community needs? And, you know, kind of, as much as we can, I know that there's gonna be impact on the government, but as much as we can, insulate ourselves and make sure that we have the best education possible for our community members and for our students themselves. You know, kind of going along with this, you know, I'm constantly, you know, listening up here and throughout the course of this evening, is we keep on hearing that things take time, that we don't have time to be able to do this, that we don't have time, you know, to be able to do this. Yet we have school board members that have been on the school board for much time. Three years, five years, six years, it doesn't really make a difference. And when we see these problems continually to occur within our districts, it's time for a change. It's time for something else. You know, there's a quote that we always say, that the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. But we haven't been getting different results. We've been having the same results over the past six years within our districts. We need to change that. We need to make sure that our community is getting what they need, that our students are getting what are needed, and that we as a community are able to go ahead and respond to anything that's occurring within the district itself.
As I said in the very beginning, I've been on board six years now. And as I said at the very beginning, 2019, I started. And then a pandemic hit, literally, the fall, and then the pandemic hit. And we've been in triage ever since. And I don't hear anyone, anywhere can I say we don't have time? She said, I know, I said things take time. And we're still, we don't even know the effects of what that pandemic has done. And we're still learning. And it's gonna take time to figure that out. Moving backwards and focusing on how things used to be is not the way to go. Moving forward is the way to go. As far as your question, anti-DEI, I, it's a horse. I cannot believe that we live in a world where people are being punished just for using those words. Diversity, equity, inclusion, accessibility, that is the backbone of this country. Our country is a melting pot. We are supposed to have open arms for everyone. And we have to fight what is going on in that in every way. And in regards to culturally responsive curriculum, what I love about the work that I'm able to do on our curriculum committee and in these sessions, again, these listening sessions with teachers that you're actually able to have give and take and learn from them, it is embedded in what we do and it's constantly evolving. And so you can take math work and really look at it in ways that is inclusive to everybody. And we are continuing to do that. And I don't wanna see that change. You know, our goals are really bold and broad in this district. And they really focus on DEI. You know, refining how we're implementing things, that's the stuff that's happening behind the scenes that you just, like, you don't hear about it all the time. But we are constantly in meetings hearing about, this isn't working. How can we change it? In these listening sessions that we started having with teachers this year, they're telling us like, this isn't working, we need more finance time. And then we're taking that back and saying, okay, how can we do this? And what can we move around with the puzzle pieces? These things are happening. They're constantly happening. But when a budget is voted down and you're losing resources and you're losing instructional leaders and you don't have the teachers to do it, then we have to figure out how to make the finances to get it. And, you know, we mentioned the $169 million budget. Well, you know, if you wanna cut the budget and we're worried about the funds, then we're gonna have to look to consolidating schools, to consolidating resources. That's how we're gonna make it happen. We cannot spend less on our educators and our students, but we're gonna have to look at how we can spend less on some of the functions in the district. And that's where the change is gonna come. And our board, we have our, you know, RFPs and the research is happening. And yeah, that stuff takes time because we're gonna do this with thought. And we're not gonna make rash decisions. Rash decisions lead to disaster.
So, I guess, to answer your question, I'd say, I want to see our district devote resources in ways that actually help marginalized students succeed, rather than in ways that make them feel bad. I think we have to acknowledge that a lot of the approaches we're taking right now aren't working. The, I would say, economic, socioeconomic status is becoming a greater and greater predictor of academic outcomes, which is antithetical to everything, I think everyone in this room believes. So we have to acknowledge that we need to do something different. I think the TSI, TSI designations that the state placed on final schools in our district, specifically for low academic performance among economically disadvantaged and Black students, show that we are not living up to our promise. So, do I support culturally sensitive, culturally responsive curriculum? If it can be done in a way that, to me, it's sort of, the outcome of improved academic improvement is the goal. And if we can find a way to do that with culturally responsive curriculum, then I am all for that. But I really think we need to acknowledge that the approach that this district has taken has led to greater and greater achievement gaps. And we need to do whatever it takes to close this.
I do support the district's DEI initiatives. I do support, undoubtedly, an anti-racist curriculum. As to what I think we should do, if we seek pressure or more pressure from the government or other forces, I think we should do what we always do. I think we should stand together. I think we should protest. I mean, we should make sure our representatives know where we stand. And we should keep ourselves informed.
Some of you may have seen a diagram that's always floating around with equality versus equity, where this one group of individuals standing on like a cardboard box. It's not a cardboard box, it's a crate. And then another group that one might be four, eight, seven, and it's about two crates that look over events, right? So, we as a school district, what do we do? And some people may not even agree with the illustration, but what do we do to ensure that we have an equitable outcome for all students? We provide the necessary resources. And we have to continue to provide the necessary resources. Because not all students come in equal, not all families come in equal. And what are we doing? I see a phrase on the wall there, "In a world where anything can be kind." And this is going even back to what BJ was asking us a question earlier about approaching African-American gay students. So be kind and be, make sure that we have the resources that we do have and need to provide. Yes, I'm committed to the culturally responsive learning and teaching that we currently have in the school district and we continually have. We require our staff to go through the training. And we've had some great educators come in, the way individuals came on historic justice. And how do we teach our youth about things like that? And it's not just educators and the classroom, it's every staff member within the school district. When my child walked off the halls of BGM, we used to have a program here called Conflict Managers and go into conflict resolution, and we used to have pictures on the walls. And my child looked at the pictures and she later told me this. It was a custodian that said, "Your picture can one day be on that wall." Because the students had to go through a conflict manager program. So, every individual, every staff member in the school district makes an impact in our children's lives. And we as community members need to support them too. And social justice, which I can't remember Pat Houston's name, but two years ago, he led social justice on Ukraine, history. And this was a program for our students to attend, as well as community members and our staff that went to the high school. We know Dr. Mia Nunn, I see her here. She's led certain initiatives at Warner Mill School throughout the district and working with different programs. So, we have a wealth of connection involved. And we need to be kind in the process. We need to be patient because some things take time. We have new windows here in BGM. That took some time. That was from a capital project. And that was finally completed during this school year. So, we have a lot of work to do. The beauty about New York State Board of Education is that they said that the state will continue to ensure that diversity and equity, inclusion are still a focus within New York City's schools.
So, love this topic. I feel like it's a very interesting and very topic. We love the word diversity. I feel like I think it is a diversity, not only through our district, but through our colleges. And like Eric said, and I don't know if anybody that's here, it does take time, but I want us to be aware that while we're working on these projects and we've taken our time to come up with the best solutions, we have children that are falling behind and are being impacted by the lack of urgency in coming with a solution to adequate academic classrooms where they feel seen, where they feel they can take their own, right? I feel like we should, as a district, as a community, take a more active approach to our families, not just some, but all of us. And come together and hear from each one of us, what can we do? What each one of us is expecting for the district? How can we get better? What do we need from each other? Not just students, but staff, teachers, families. Like, we all need one another in order to build. We are, together, the backbone of the district. We can't build without each other. So, the best way that I can think of this is, let's not keep talking about this subject in a segregation way, but let's come together and reimagine and rethink and we come with better plans moving forward. Because it does take time, but eventually some of the children, you know, they're gonna graduate, they're gonna fall out of the district, so what I do to them? They all matter and it's our responsibility for us to do better for our children. So, thank you.
So because I'm a professor of education and I assign coursework, gracias al, when you ask this question, I'm gonna go full out nerd mode. And so I apologize if this response is too nerdy, but I just can't help it. Let me talk about culturally responsive practices and curriculum. If every single person in this room, and everyone in this seat, or even two people were asked, "What does that mean?", we would all give wildly different answers. So I think we should, like, I should clarify, yes, I support culturally responsive practices. But I'm not sure if, in the New York State school district, what we call culturally responsive practices are culturally responsive practices. So for me, and I would argue for the people who sort of wrote about and came up with culturally responsive teaching as an idea, like Gloria Lenz and Billings, they said that it was about making sure that students have what they need to be successful. So, first and foremost, culturally responsive teaching is about students having the academic skills and mindsets to make sure that they can lead the lives of their choice. That's the foundation. So, any teaching that is not leading to that is not culturally responsive. But what that means is that, like, we're providing students with windows and mirrors, right? Both opportunities to see outside of ourselves and to understand our own identity, right? Topics of deep interest to us naturally and things we wanna be more curious about. Culturally responsive teaching honors students as thinkers and sense makers. Do we have instructional practices right now in the Edith County School District where every student is treated like someone who is capable of academics and making sense of scientific phenomena or historical concepts or any of, any of those things? Are we implementing evidence-based practices? There's been a lot. The federal government unfortunately has stopped funding the Institute for Education Science, which say in the last 10 years has written more about what we know instructional should look like in every single subject area than was written in the previous 60 years. We know more about how the brain works, about how to engage students in classroom than we've known at any other point in time. And that requires a coordinated effort from the Edith County School District to define what effective teaching is. And I will also add this topic to be an onerous, unacceptable burden on teachers to repeat their own lessons, which happens in many, many areas across the school district. And for every minute the teachers are spending making their own lessons, even though, I'll use science in this example, there is a K-12 science curriculum that is free called Open Sci Ed that is excellent. Check it out. I don't work for them. But that's, imagine if, as a student, if your teacher, instead of frantically creating lessons for the next day, had access to, and district-wide commitment and support, to share teaching practices and to share curriculum so that they can, like, it enables folks to teach better. It reduces turnover. So, yes, I support it, based on how I am just defined it. Like the foundation, like relationships with students being successful. It's ready.
First and foremost, I wanna thank you guys all for contributing your best to these questions because we really worked hard to make them for you. This is my last and final question, and it's a quick yes or no. That, seriously, that is it. The members of the Village Youth Board are advocating for lowering the voting age in school board elections here in 2016. So that the current students, they have a meaningful opportunity to make decisions about their elected officials. If elected, would you support this proposal? Yes or no?
And say absolutely. And I think, Elgin is, was here, I remember us kind of getting that ball rolling and it just kind of trickled, like, absolutely, yes, yes, 100% yes.
I could never consider that until 60 seconds ago. So, you asked for a one-word answer, and I, well, now my one-word answer is no. But I would be, I'd like to think about more.
Yes. Yes, and I have to give a little bit of that. This is because a community member, Jeff Furman, had connected with me some months ago about this initiative. And I connected him with Mary Rover, who is our deputy superintendent, too. Because we were trying to do it for this year, posited to a pilot, really. New Jersey passed it last year, 2024, for students aged 16 to be able to vote in school board elections because it impacts that. We talked about it and I went to LACS recently, where some students there, they were talking about it and eager to, I think, we were to do a pilot. The Board of Elections, that does our election process in this area, they had it ready, they were ready to receive, at least a pilot to discover. So, definitely yes to.
Absolutely. I believe your voice matters, so yes.
Yes, is my inclination. Although with anything that I haven't thought about that much before, I wanna do more research about it, having that inclination in this day and age.
I'll be honest, I'm in the same boat as many people up here. I guess I've never really thought about this, I've never hearing about the New Jersey case. My initial inclination is yes. I feel like, you know, people should always have a voice. And any way that we can allow that to happen is great. If you do know, if you, the student reps are, we do have student reps on the school board right now. We have multiple reps from each school that come and represent the schools, represent the students. And so, yeah, the more that we can have engagements within our community in our elections, I'm all for it. But I don't know that legal implications are that. I don't know a lot of information. So, we have a lot of learning to go along with that.
That's all for everybody.
Thank you all for coming to see the opening. Candidates, fill free the seat for a few minutes in case members of the audience have questions or to share content and information. And don't forget to vote, maintain it. You know we would, but.